To the regular meeting of the Blue Lake City Council Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Skinner Store Community Center. I am now calling the meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please, quorum of the council?
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Iker?
Here.
Councilmember Stefani?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor Potem Shaw is absent.
Thank you. That leads us to number two, approval of the agenda. Let's first talk amongst ourselves. Is there anyone here that would like to move anything around from the council that's on the agenda in any way? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to have anything moved from the agenda or changed? Okay, back to the council for a vote on approving the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Chris Edgar to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? The chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
I have some papers to pass around. There's two pages to each of these things. I gave you copies of what I'm about to read. Kent Sawatsky, I went to buy a dryer, electric dryer, for $75 out in the Danco project out in Samoa. And so I talked to a person and I just said, what do you think of this place? And I, nothing at all. She said, well, I need to tell you some things. And so she wrote this to me, and I asked her not to put her name on it for obvious reasons, and I'm going to read it into the record regarding what happens out there. To whom it may concern regarding Dan Cobill, Blue Lake, California, 95525. I am writing letter, this letter, on behalf of the lovely residents in Blue Lake, California in hopes of preventing anywhere else from enduring the same tsunami my family and I have while living in the Phyllis Rex Samoa townhouses. My family and I were some of the first residents to move into the townhouse in November of 2020. It was like a dream in the beginning. If you look past the fact that the townhouses were still actively under construction, but the move-in date had been postponed so many times, they couldn't push it out anymore. Unfortunately, Danco had just fired the manager that was supposed to live on site mere days prior to move-in. The management living quarters weren't complete for four to six months, so as tenants, we're on our own. Nonetheless, I loved our little community. As time went on, we had gone through about three managers back to back. The community quickly became less savvy. There is not enough time in the world to give you all the incidents that came to be, although I am more than happy to elaborate deeper for concerned citizens with more time following. In short, Danco absolutely dire-licked of duty to even just everyday maintaining of this build is nothing short of outrageous. There is no regard for tenants, and good luck getting anything fixed. I have had to become a handyman for myself and fellow tenants behind the scenes. Because it's so impossible to get maintenance here, the roads to get to the complex are still not complete and riddled with potholes. Throughout three to five years later, potholes that caused major car damage. They dumped piles of dirt from who knows where that I had to restrict my children from due to them failing, falling so ill every time they touched it. We have been harassed, bullied, and threatened by employees of Danco. The lack of background checking of these individuals is a scary situation. After a background check out of curiosity, one of the workers had had a master key and had actually been arrested for home invasions. The conflict between tenants is regarded as, that's your problem. Instead of protecting the tenants as they are required by law to do, they protect against any and for, is that my time or do I have a little time left? Any foreseeable acts. I'll let you read the rest of this. It continued on and it gets even worse. So I wish you to go out there and talk to the people. This was just one person I talked to. It may be prejudiced, I don't know, but I think you're going to find the same things too. I've heard about Santa Rosa and other places the same. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? And we do have someone on Zoom.
Hi. I just wanted to say, first of all, Mandy, I'm very happy to see you here, and that is very genuine. You know, it was really scary for a lot of people, and as a Blue Lake citizen, as a mother, as a sister, I really am happy to hear that you're doing well, and I really do mean that. I just have one thing to say. It's just regarding the usage of the Facebook groups, and I was looking for clarification on city announcements, if they were supposed to be announced by the city of Blue Lake Facebook or not. I think that that was something that was decided upon, and then maybe from their other Facebook groups can share the information, but specifically the roundabout things that went up. One was on my street, and I didn't even see that it was going up because I'm not on the Humboldt Happenings page, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And on Zoom, Julie?
Thank you, everybody. I just want to chime in and say, this is Julie Christie. I'd just like to put my appreciation for the Zoom. I see the participants, I see they're a little slammed. However, I really, really appreciate this opportunity. So, I know I'm a minority, but I'd like to just say thank you very much for that opportunity. I would like to chime back in on the truck route update. I think it's important that we still, I'm not sure what timing of actions and decisions have already been made on the truck route update. My last prior knowledge was basically the survey, and I know some funds have been spent, but I just want to get back to just getting back to our business owners that are coming through that area with their big trucks and having to keep everybody safe, too. I think it's really important that we accommodate their needs and our partners' needs to make sure that we're seeing, sorry, navigating our streets. I worry mostly about any kind of emergency situations. The little pop-up roundabouts that were put up recently, I did kind of just take my pickup around that earlier today because that's the route I take every day coming back from school, back to my home, and a lot of times I'm accommodating my stock trailer, and honestly, I'd have to kiss the sidewalks to make that accommodated. And I do believe we need alternatives to safety in the town. I do believe we need traffic slowing. I just think that we have, and I know stop signs are expensive, I understand that, and I know other alternatives are expensive, but I think anyway that we keep our roadways really open and able to be accessible by both the businesses, like my husband that leaves me stranded every day here on the farm because he's driving a truck. We've got to keep that thing, we've got to keep it safe for our first responders. I won't take any more time, I just always want to chime in, but I think a truck route update would be amazing, just so that we're not spending any money that could then be swabbed on about later because we could have had a better solution. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Item four, City of Blue Lake Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission appointments. The city of Blue Lake currently has openings on the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Commission, and the Arts and Heritage Commission. The city has been advertising the vacancies and has received applications from the following individuals. Jean Lynch for the Planning Commission, Jack Kirchabel for the Planning Commission, and Kelly Costa for the Economic Development Commission. And all of the applicants have handed in their resumes and filled out the application appropriately, so it's up to the council how you'd like to proceed. So, Mandy, is it just one Planning Commission opening? Okay.
Yeah, and one Economic Development Commission.
Okay, right. So, what is the pleasure of the council?
If there's two, do we need to make a vote?
Right. Yeah, we'll have to nominate one of them.
Okay, well, the one that is open and only one applicant, we should nominate those people first.
Okay.
And then go to a vote for the person that has two.
Okay.
So.
So I'll move that we nominate, or that we appoint Kelly Costa to the Economic Development Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Stefani to nominate, well, I guess not nominate, but appoint, yeah. Appoint Kelly Costa to the position that's open on the Economic Development Commission. Is there any further discussion from council? Any?
Is Kelly here?
I don't see her here. I know her. Anyone from public? Chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
It's unfortunate that she's not here. When I attend a lot of supervisors' meetings, I think I say that's number one, but she had a slam dunk, I can understand her not feeling like being here. That's a sign that somebody who's actually here should always take priority over someone else unless they've called in with a legitimate excuse saying, I can't be here. Now, I bet her, I knew her. In fact, I was at one time going to partner up with her to put a restaurant in the Blue Lake Emporium down there, and I was going to use her business model and get her food delivered there rather than me having a kitchen and getting her specials. She seems to be a great businessperson, I vetted her at that time. I was to the point where I was happy to partner up with somebody, and I don't think, for those of you who, how strong it would take to me to partner up with somebody, that's saying a lot, you know? That's a thorough vetting. But I strongly support her, I think she'll be a heck of an asset to that, and I strongly support, in other circumstances, anybody who shows up. They don't show up, maybe that's a sign that they won't show up at the meetings, and that might be something to consider. I always recommend that. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, back to council for a possible vote. So we've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Kelly Costa is our new Economic Development Commissioner. Okay, now, we always have a problem when there are two people for one position, and there are other opportunities to be had for being on commissions. We have openings frequently.
Are these people here? Jean's here?
Jean's here, yeah.
Is Jack here?
I don't see him.
Okay. Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here for our city that needs to have growth and understanding and stability. Very nice. So, Jack's not here, huh? And I'm getting older, and I kind of decided, well, maybe I'm getting too old for this position, and I do have some health issues, but I do see a need for, to understand the importance of the Planning Commission position. It needs to be valued, it needs to be taken seriously. I'd like to do that. I also understand there may be a reason that Jack is not here, and I, you know, maybe he's coming in at the last moment, I don't know. I'll take the position, and I have done this before because nobody else would take a position. That's how I got on the council. So, it's very disappointing for me. I can do it. I don't expect any understanding of how deeply I feel about the need for Blue Lake to be moving forward instead of stuck in first gear. So, okay, I'm here. I will accept the position for now, depending on my health. I cannot guarantee how my health is going to do, but I'll do it for now. And with the option that in the future, if something comes up and my health, you know, I can't do it, I find somebody else. Thank you, that's all we can ask.
Did the council want to ask Jean any questions? I was curious now. You were on the Planning Commission once before.
I was on the council for three and a half years.
I thought you were on the Planning Commission for a few months. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Jean Lynch to the Planning Commission. I am not ready to do that yet because I'm not, just because Jack's not here doesn't mean that he's not qualified for the position. True, true. So, I had read both of their applications, and I think that Jack is quite qualified for this position, actually. So, I'm sorry that he's not here, but it doesn't mean that I would not still appoint him to the position. I believe both of the candidates are qualified. I feel that it's important to have a balance on the commission, and I don't know anything about Jack, I haven't looked at his application, but I feel that there's a value that we don't, that isn't always on paper, that we get when we work with folks that have been in town for a long time, when we work with folks that have the years behind them, so to speak, to have that life experience and that wisdom that comes with that. So, I feel like Jean is a person of passion.
It's really hard when you know, you know the people involved, so, but I kind of tend to agree with Elizabeth that John, Jonathan, or Jack as he's called, is very highly qualified. So, would you like to make a motion? Was yours a motion? Do you want to chime in at all, Chris, or?
Yeah, I think Jack is far more qualified, and I really appreciate new vision coming into our town. That's what we need, we need some better eyes on our community, newer eyes.
So it looks like your motion has died from the second.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jack to the Planning Commission.
I second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Christopher Edgar to appoint Jonathan A. Kirchabel, known as Jack, to the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion from the council? Any discussion from public? Marty Granger, the chair recognizes you.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if both of them might be on the Planning Commission, just a thought. There's just one spot available. I think there's only one spot available.
There is only one spot. The chair recognizes Kent Sawatsky.
I always applaud people for applying, you know, and there's always other options as far as coming and filling a seat later. We seem to have a continual change on these particular commissions on a regular basis. I look forward to having some communication with, I was also, like you, impressed with his resume. He didn't have the longevity, three years in the area, worked for Arcata. I do always feel that somebody who has the institutional knowledge, personally, I feel that any of you sitting up here should have been on the Planning Commission before you're sitting there. That seems to me, should have been a prereq. I think you were secretary back when they did the general plan, so you actually had something to do with it, so that's a good thing.
I was on the Park and Rec Commission for eight years.
For eight years, awesome. Well, anyway, I did wish to ask him some questions, he seemed like he's an expert in CEQA. I'm a semi-expert, but I have, probably his professor who taught him at Humboldt State was probably someone that I would ask him about, and he could let me know a little bit more about his expertise there. I think it is really important for staff to get a hold of these people and recommend how important it is to show up, because we as the public, we don't have his phone number, we don't have his email, unless we know where he lives and go in and knock on his door and vet. And I vet probably 30 people that came out with recommendations for the Planning Commission for Humboldt County there before. And they say, well, he called me, he's the only one who talked to me and talked to all the recommendations. That's how you get things done. You have to have references, you call the references, and you vet somebody, and I think he's going to work out fine. My gut feel is some of you may be surprised that he may have some expertise in some areas that I will be very pleasant to work with regarding the Planning Commission. The smarter the person is on these positions, with my knowledge and access to knowledge, the more beneficial it's going to be to our community. I'm not having any problem with you appointing him, I just want you to be aware that sometimes you may not wish to have the sharpest tools and the tool belt on there because they actually know what they're doing. So thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Julie, did you want to chime in?
Yes, Adeline. Thank you for taking my Zoom.
Adeline.
I think it's really cool that we have some new blood, if we would call that, stepping into our commissions. I think that's really important. I also think it's important to incorporate the old or historical knowledge that is willing and accessible, so as you move forward, always using those resources of prior, any kind of, any kind of individuals that ever want to step up, just offer their help. I think that's great. We need a diversity. For saying we put these other people on our commission positions, they need to learn, so giving them access and advising them to review prior commission meetings that are on full access. And thank you, Justin, for being there, all your supportings, and that even as, I'm just going to throw this in there, I know it's not going to be as online, but if we have this commission meeting Zoom, or at least recorded, you can, Justin, it's a great reference for anybody jumping in and wanting to go in and they can review material, review what's been going on, and be up to date. So, as much as we can do that for resource for future commissioners, I think that's a huge asset. And I congratulate those of our applicants, I think they're both highly qualified for the position.
Thank you, Julie. Yeah, and I always want to thank people that want to step forward and work on a commission. It's a hard job, you get a lot of slack from people, it's not easy, you have to have kind of tough skin, but I appreciate it. I appreciate you, Jean, stepping forward, thank you for that. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of appointing Jack Kirchabel for the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item five, subdivision improvement agreement for Eliason Minor Subdivision, and application This is an action item, and our planner, Gary Reese, is here.
So I want to bring up that my son-in-law is a business partner with one of the Eliason folks, and I don't know if that's a conflict of interest or not, but if it is, I will step out.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on conflict of interest.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I wasn't sure on this one.
Yeah.
Since it's a son-in-law and it's not directly related to their.
It doesn't have anything to do with this, but they have, they're in a different business together, so I didn't know, so I just thought I'd bring it up anyway and disclose it. I don't know if it matters.
Well, it's up to you, not having a lawyer on board here. If you don't feel comfortable voting on this and you feel that it is a conflict, you can step out.
Well, I wouldn't want to do anything illegal or something that wouldn't stand, so I'd probably be in the best interest of everyone if I did just step out. Should I just step out or just step back and just not say anything?
Let's see, I think when this happened with Angela Shohol, she actually did step outside.
She left the building. Do I have to leave the building? You want to?
If you just want to recuse yourself from.
From voting.
From voting.
Yeah, I think I'll just recuse myself.
It's usually like an issue of intimidation or if you're in the.
Yeah, I'm good. I'll hang out, but I'll just recuse from voting just because I don't want it to become an issue later.
Okay, let the record show that councilperson McKay is recusing herself from this item. Oh, you're still going to sit up here, fine.
Oh, it's okay if I stay, right?
Yeah, I guess.
I think it's fine.
All right. Gary Reese, would you like to give us the report, please?
So I'm a consulting city planner, Gary Reese, for those who don't know, and this is a minor subdivision that was approved for Casey and Stacia Eliason back in 2019, and they're ready to start construction on their subdivision improvements. There's some infrastructure and utility improvements that are needed to serve the subdivision, and they've submitted improvement plans and a cost estimate, which has been reviewed and approved by the city engineer. And in your packet, you have a subdivision improvement agreement, which the form was developed by the city attorney, and staff filled in the relevant information. Attached to it, you have the improvement plans, you also have the resolution that was adopted by the Planning Commission, which contains the tentative parcel map and other relevant information that was attached to that resolution. So, basically, before they're able to start construction of their subdivision improvements, they have to enter into one of these agreements with the city, so that's what this is. And it basically lays out all sorts of things, as to the requirements for doing the improvements, the time period in which they need to be done, the amounts they need to bond for, for the improvements, all that kind of stuff is in there. So if you have any questions about any of that, let me know. So, basically, yeah, the agreement's been reviewed by staff. At this stage, it's ready for the council to review, and we're recommending that you adopt the agreement. And then after that, basically, it would be signed by the city manager and the subdivider, and they would provide their bonds for it, and they would be able to begin their subdivision improvements. And the applicant and his wife is here tonight, well, they're both applicants, Casey and Stacia Eliason, so if you have any questions for them, I'm sure they're available to answer those.
So this was approved by the Planning Commission on June 10th, 2019. Why has it taken so long?
There's probably a variety of reasons, but they have requested extensions to their tentative parcel map, so they do the subdivision improvement agreement, they're able to start their subdivision improvements, and then also record the parcel map for the subdivision. But, you know, they may be able to speak to the reasons why it's taken so long, but subdividers have the ability to request up to three years of extensions. They're supposed to typically record the parcel map within two years of its approval, but they can request those three years of extensions, which is, you know, gives them an additional, you know, a total of five years, I should say.
Well, over four years, so I guess that's within the time limit.
Yeah, they still have time to record their parcel maps, primarily what the thing is that they need to accomplish.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you. Is there any comment from public on this item? The chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
I highly recommend you passing this. Having done development myself and subdivisions and projects, it's a wonderful project, great use of the ground, contributes to our housing problems we have in Blue Lake, and it's a difficult road these people have gone down, you know, as far as this goes, and it's also difficult to bring these things to fruition at today's prices. And so, any of these projects like this, you're going to find me, like the Russo project needs, I'll be supporting. And so, so any of these projects like this, you're going to find me like the Russo project, and I'll be supporting. I think it would be a great project for Blue Lake, and I think we owe, we owe, we owe great gratitude to them for their investment, their time, and their money and expertise. Their engineer seems exceptional, I've known him before, Mr. I think Whitaker, was that your engineer? He does, he does an extremely good job on these kind of things. And, and I, and that might be the wrong name, but it's close, anyway. Anyway, they have great engineer, great staff in this, and I highly recommend your staff thing and move forward with this project, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, back to, oh, sorry. Chair recognizes Gene Lynch.
I, I just have a question, and I know you've worked hard on, on this project. I live on Greenwood, yeah, right across from, um. So I have a question, and it's about the pole, the electrical pole. It's in, in the sidewalk, it's right there, and it's going to have to be, I believe, have to be moved or centered. And the city is also developing Greenwood and widening the sidewalk in the future. And then PT and E is dropping electrical on Greenwood, I understand if that's true. Taking the poles out and dropping electrical, underground, underground electrical. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious with the subdivision and the work that's being done, the timeframe for what has to be done for building and complying with the subdivision? And with the knowledge that there is going to be this additional work and how that plays together and how that works together. But that, that was just a question I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, thank you for your comment, Gene. I just learned today at our walk with Dan Burden that it, it seems that it's not going to be possible to underground the poles along Greenwood Avenue. And, and that's something I was really hoping that would happen because I've seen the children walk around those poles. I'm a big proponent, as some of you know, of underground wiring. But Mike Fogut, our city engineer, just said that it's so expensive that it would just be completely out of our realm to do that. So the project as it stands will definitely be enlarging, widening the sidewalks, and some bump outs and some other calming attributes that will go to the, to the street to make it safer for children. But unfortunately, I just learned that the undergrounding will not be possible as of this time. Anyway, any other public comment on this item? Back to council for a vote. Possible direction?
I make a motion that we adopt the subdivision improvement agreement and want to make a comment and say, thank you, guys, congratulations. I hope it goes smoothly from here for you guys.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Chris Edgar, seconded by Elise Scifani, to approve the application as recommended by the city planner. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
One abstain.
One abstain, one absence. Oh, you abstain. I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, so there is one abstention and one person that is not here. So it's three. It's still a majority.
I just don't know if that's an abstention if you recuse yourself.
Well, then call it one recuse.
Yeah, I think it's abstaining from voting, right?
Yeah, she abstained. All right, thank you and congratulations. Okay.
Yeah, thanks so much.
We are on item six. Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Law enforcement agreement with the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. There is some background information, and this is something councilperson Elise Scifani put on the agenda, so I will let her speak to it if she wishes.
Well, I feel that the documents more or less speak for themselves, but I'm sure there's lots already to have on this. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, my concern about delaying making a budget accommodation for this amount of money is that the longer we go, or we're spending the money, we're spending twenty six, over twenty six thousand dollars a month currently for the sheriff's services. As that, that change in costs started on July first. So I'm just concerned that we have a limited amount of time to make some changes to our budget so that we can accommodate that. And the money may not be as, as critical as law enforcement. So in my, my, looking into the issue, I've learned a number of things about, about law enforcement and what we can and can't do with and without the sheriff. I understand that Mandy's been talking to a private street firm and hoping to make that part of our law enforcement package overall. But it looks like we can't really do that without the sheriff's services to handle the types of things that we need a sworn California police officer to do.
Contract that we have, the. I like the move that we table this.
Well, you might want to continue it. Because the word table is very punitive, I mean, it's, it's very solid.
Table means indefinite.
Okay.
We might want to.
Well, it is a discussion we're going to have to have, but I don't think we have to have it now because we're under contract until twenty twenty four this time.
Well, before we continue this item, I would love to hear from folks that perhaps have more experience than me, how, how we plan to pay for it if we get to the end of, say, the. And there's no more money appropriated for this purpose. We can, we can continue this every month, but every month we continue it, we spend more money.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
Maybe you could share your reasons for wanting to continue it.
We can table.
Because I think this is still being discussed, and I think that we're overstepping our bounds by trying to make a decision before it's three.
I see. Well, is there an update? Mandy, do you have an update for us on any discussions or, or plans?
Well, I think you included in your packet my discussions with the sheriff, which I'm not honestly sure how that came to be. That email between Sheriff Council and myself somehow ended up with, with your, with you. So I'm assuming that either you are CC'd somehow on the email correspondence between the sheriff and I, but somehow that made it into your possession and into the packet. So I think that's where we're at at this point. There's a lot of conversations to be made with our county supervisors, looking at options. And we're just continuing to have those discussions about the legitimacy of this increase and the impacts to the city of Blue Lake. I can't recommend that we move forward with this contract amount. I think it's, I don't think it's justifiable at this point. I don't think that the rationale or the methodology is appropriate for our community, and I think it's such a huge impact that we really need some additional time to see what options that we have. And I don't think there's been enough time or enough conversation that has taken place between all the players to be able to come to some, some type of legitimate result at this point. And I don't feel that we're in jeopardy of losing our contract by any means.
And I want to continue to tell citizens not to be concerned, that we have coverage. If there is a crime that's occurring, or if something has happened to you or your property, you still need to notify the sheriff. We are under contract with the sheriff, so there's no cause for alarm or concern. These things have happened before, I've been in government a long time, and these things have happened before. It's called negotiations, and it occurs. So we are under contract with the sheriff, and they will come out if and when you ever need them. So please do not start any rumors or start making people afraid of anything less than that.
Well, it seems like Sheriff Council's letter that he's interested, he says he'll make himself available to discuss the matter, but he's pretty clear that if there's not a negotiation going on, the service level is more price. So I guess my concern is that we as a council have not heard any, any substantive information regarding where we would go from here. I mean, we're just going to delay and keep hoping for this.
Well, I think the city manager gets to be involved in coming to the center to be in the way. We maybe have some people that.
I don't think it's our job to do the digging. To the city council.
I think it's our job to.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, I should. But I, I feel this is on the bridge of understanding, so I'm, I'm trying to do that.
So you originally made a motion to table this, I asked you to continue it, but I do like this.
It will come to council, so we can. Can we have some sort of conversation or agreement as to when we'd like to come back, with something to move forward? Before it expires?
Before it expires and when Mandy says we need to agree this, when we have no other choice to agree to it.
So it expires on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty four. So whether or not we move forward and agree an appropriate fund store, we will be paying a new part price, you understand that?
Yes.
And what happens, which has happened before, is we will find the money if we need to, and there will be a budget amendment, which is again made. The budget again is a fluid thing, it's a plan, but it's not set in stone.
We can only be amended if the money, that we might identify. Right? So for example, the American Rescue Company, they have one thousand dollars. Right, if we make too long, seven hundred thousand dollars might be spent on other things.
Well, I trust that our, our city makes financially responsible decisions, so I'm not going to worry about that personally.
Well, we can be financially responsible, and we can ask that that money be held and not spent on other things until this happens.
I still feel that that's meddling in other things.
That's not meddling, that being financially responsible.
I don't see that this thing is a history of not being financially responsible, so I'm not.
Let's not start now.
Right, I don't think it will.
There is a motion on the floor, I believe, to continue this item?
Yeah, but not every month.
Yeah, okay, so then, right, so then if you want to call it table, that's fine. I just have a really hard time with that work.
Well, I would like to wait until our city manager comes to us with the, with the proposal that, the agreement that she has with the sheriff. That's what I would like to do.
So I can do that motion.
Well, I think we have until twenty twenty four. That's a year.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Chris Edgar, to continue this item. I'm going to do that in a minute. I'm not going to call for a vote yet. That we continue this item until further direction from our city staff. Is there any further discussion from council? Any public discussion? The chair recognizes Mr. Sawatsky.
All the public is asking of you that you designate enough money to fulfill the contract, that you reserve that in your budget until twenty twenty four. Failing to do that would be financially, financially irresponsible. You, you would find that you're going to lose your, your faith in that the public thinks you want to protect our health, safety, and welfare. And if you can show the funds, an example, I spoke with Karen Clowers today, and I don't know if you know who she is, but she's number two or three in the, the county thing, and this is who I deal with. The contracts you've had before, I've negotiated behind the scenes frequently, in case you didn't know that. So anyway, I spoke with Ms. Clowers today, and I asked her, is the ARPA money able to be used for police? And she said, I will get a definite decision for you. She called me back and left, and she says, yes, it is. We're asking you to reserve those funds, and if you come up with some other wonderful thing, that's great, it saves us money. In the meantime, we don't want to have us go down this road and you say, oh, we thought we had the money, we don't. So what are we going to do? We're going to fire employees to have law enforcement? I mean, to be financially responsible for things, that, that's a definition. You make sure the money's going to be there, you lock it down. It's not going to hurt you folks at all to go ahead and guarantee the public's health, safety, and welfare till twenty twenty four. Lock it, the whole thing down. All we're asking is to lock it down to this particular fiscal year, we'll deal with it next fiscal year. And there are some major concerns that I have. I finally got the balance, the balance sheet for the city, and I'm going to have that audited by a very top-notch forensic accountant. I'm not totally confident that money is always there when you guys think it is. And there's been money that possibly has been moved around, we're going to find out. But all we're asking is just set the money aside. I don't care if you don't do your ARPA, but use something else, say, we're going to be able to satisfy the, what, three hundred and fifteen thousand? We want another hundred and forty, fifty thousand, whatever it is, set aside, and then we're done. There's no problem. And I'm not asserting we're going to lose it because it takes a sixty notice, but if on the other hand you get down here, six months down the road, and, and where, where are you going to steal the money from? I don't know, are you going to take it out of your reserves? You have to think about these things, it's called financing, long-term things, that's what we do. I really strongly suggest that, that you do not table this or continue this until anything beyond next meeting. I think the question for, for Ms. Maygr is, when was the last time you spoke with Sheriff Billy? Did you speak with him in the last three days, five days? When are the conversations happening? Because if there wasn't a conversation instantly when this problem is here, then something's wrong. And I think you're going to find something's wrong. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, I don't want to be a doomsayer all the time, but we would really like to see the money set aside some way or another. And know that we can be secure in our homes without having to worry about losing a contract that protects our families, our children, and all the other people that are important to us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Julie, did you want to speak on this matter?
Well, yes, I'd love to, and just really quickly, I would just like to say, I really support the council's decision at this point, trying to table it. I do believe that our contract is not up for renewal till twenty four June. And I think in the meantime, though, if we are tabling it and getting updates, which I do also support, that if we ever feel like we're in a financial strain, this is a good time to bring it up now. Because we have that opportunity per se. You know, I love the idea of both having sheriff's contract, I love the idea of having our contract returning back, sharing their opportunity with the individuals that can provide us more of a, you know what I'm talking about? Where they're riding some streets, kind of having influence. If we ever need to go down the grassroots, I think we've got beautiful facilities and opportunities that we could use, some amazing fundraisers that would generate some great little, like, you know, we could put the little earmuffs on these funds to go back to these, these contracts. And we have time to do that now. We are foreshadowing any kind of financial restraints that are going to interfere in the future to do that. Because we don't have any options. Obviously, there are a lot of challenges that are back in town, that that's going to be, or individual benefits that are going to be unable and unusual. But we have a lot of, both our contract and sheriff, we probably can't negotiate too much situations here, it's going to hit us everywhere we look, anywhere we go. And then if we have some private individuals that we're supporting, great. And if we need to just grassroots some financial support for this between now and then, let's do it. I'll bring the head in soon, I'll bring the coin in your eyes, I'm happy to make a comment. I know a lot of the contractors. I know a lot of the contractors saying that it's out in the sphere of influence of the local, you know what, that's the same wild, full town, we're protecting a wildly attacking. So, we want to, and we might just need to make a little bit of that money to do that and just in case, if we do, we don't use it for that, but just in case, go through grants, but in the meantime, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Jean Lynch.
I was here when Gunderson made a fiasco out of this department that we had. It was awful. I don't know how many people remember this. Remember this?
I was on the council.
Yes, we had no safety. We had him running around with, with AK-47s. I confronted him one day. I asked him, okay, if somebody's going to knock at my door like a neighbor had and try to knock the door down and kill her, what does she do? She, and he said, nothing. You don't do anything. I, I am not going to go through that again. Not, not for anybody. And it's the responsibility of the council to make sure that we don't have to go through anything like that we had before. And I tried to get a neighborhood watch program started on Greenland and was working with the sheriff and his representative, and that fell apart. We had Measure Z money, $75,000 a year for three years. And, and one of the things that came up with the Measure Z funding was that we would work to try to work with the sheriff's department, with the neighborhood watch, try to get things mitigated so that our town is safe. So, if, knowing that the Measure Z fund came to play to give us money to facilitate the deputies that we had, we had to. Why, we have not been looking forward to putting money aside for something that may come up as an emergency. And, and I, I call this planning and, and which is what we were supposed to be doing and, and getting the Measure Z funds, that was part of it, knowing that going forward, we were going to need some finances for this. This is not old news. This is, I mean, this is, this is something that has been going on for years. And setting aside some money appropriately is, it has to be done for the safety of the city. We don't want to go back to, there's nothing you can do if, if somebody's knocking down your door, trying to knock down your door and, and kill you. And that did happen to a neighbor. My neighbor. I wasn't happy. She wasn't happy. She went into shock. We don't need that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jean. Is there any other public comment on this item?
I'm just going to say that I'm almost speechless with the emails that have been received that we're going to play this game. It's disappointing, but I expect nothing less.
Thank you. Okay, back to council for the vote. We have a motion and a second. Oh. Thank you for that. Angela, dear.
So, it's clear to myself and others in this room that there is no actual negotiation going on. It would behoove you to set aside funds for next year. You know, we've had a pandemic. We've had all kinds of crazy things, you falling down stairs. We can't predict what the future is going to be, so we should prepare for it as best we can. There's nothing wrong with setting aside the monies now and that way we all feel safe while we wait for your negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, I'm Lisa Rosato. I'd like to say I find this utterly ridiculous. We need to allow our city staff the opportunity to do their damn jobs and step back and let them do that. Mandy is extremely, maybe no one likes her, that's fine. None of her very long time. She's intelligent. She should be able to do her job without constant people stepping in and questioning her. And when we have a member of the city council who's getting emails that she should not be privy to, you have to wonder, are they, whose side are they on? Allow Mandy to do her job, to get a contract that is to our benefit, so that we're not paying for things that we should be paying for. I'm sorry. This, this entire thing is frustrating that we have a lot of people just, without a lot of information, stepping in and second guessing folks. I agree with Julie. If we need a fundraiser, let's fundraise. If we need to do extra money, fantastic, we'll get out there and do extra money, but allow the staff to do their jobs. And we don't need people second guessing. And if we have members of the council who are passing out information that they shouldn't be passing out, then they shouldn't be on council. That's my opinion.
Thank you for your comment.
I'd just like to address that accusation, everything that's in the packet is a matter of public record, that somebody chose to send it to me without even a request from me is an indication that the sheriff's department doesn't know that I'm an advocate for law enforcement and they sent it to me for that reason. And Mandy said that in her own words, in her own private email, when we were discussing the topic of having this on the agenda. So, all of this is a matter of public record. Any one of you tomorrow can make a public records request either to the city or the sheriff's department and get this and many, many more emails going in lots of different directions. So, there's nothing, there's nothing unforword about a council member who was elected by the people of this town looking out for the interests of the people of this town. And I do that the best way I know how, and that is to get some answers for myself, do my own research, figure out what, what I can. I don't understand every detail of every piece of everything. I ask a lot of questions. I get a lot of answers. I try to piece those answers together. I'm taking everything that's been spoken, then everything I've seen in the Public Safety Commission meetings, everything Mandy has said about how she wants to put different things together. I've talked to the sheriff. I've talked to his agent, who does all the contracting. So, that's where I go. I get my information from the source. I understand Mandy's work really hard to try to send this money and try to put together a package that's affordable and comprehensive, and I applaud those efforts. But at some point, we might have to just say uncle and realize that the law enforcement that we need is going to cost us a certain amount of money and we just have to figure out how to find the money and pay that amount so that we can maintain this contract, so that we can maintain the relationship we have with the sheriff's office. Okay, we all want to trust them. We all want them to feel good about us. When the 911 call goes out, we want them to want to come and protect us. And they will. So, please don't start making people feel afraid because that's where this is all based on fear.
Nobody's feeling afraid. This is, this part of this, part of this is, is relationship. We have a relationship.
Your, your getting information is fine, but you're negotiating with, with
I'm not negotiating with anyone.
The sheriff is not fine. Okay, that's not your job as a city council person. Okay.
I'm advocating.
Well, the advocacy and
The city to sooner rather than later.
You're advocating for the city? I'm advocating for the city to move forward sooner rather than later. You, this is asked for to accept the contract increase and that's a no right now. I heard you, according to me. Yes. Okay, thank you.
So, there's been a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes three to one with one absent member. Item seven, public records request. Mr. Sawatsky requested that an item be placed on the agenda to discuss the California Public Records Act and the City of Arcata.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you on this topic today. I didn't know how much time I would be allotted. I thought I'd pass this up to you. I request the normal procedure happened, that happens in most forums, that 15 minutes should be plenty sufficient, and then we could have a back and forth if you have questions with me or not. Unfortunately, I did not get all this information in for the packet, so I'm giving it to you now. It'll probably need to be on another future agenda because there will be need to be actions taken. So, I'm going to explain the first page we have here, and this basically was handled in the correct way. And your city manager said your PRA request has been received, will be processed accordingly. Please contact the city clerk, of course, that's her, and including questions and providing the documents that, so that's the way that it's handled by all forums. That's the correct manner to respond to a public records request. And then, on the next page, on the, the second, the second email on that page, I was told that, basically, the short part of the thing is that I, she will not be communicating with me further. So, by email. And so, she's saying she will not fulfill her obligation under the PRA guidelines. So, she needs to either delegate that to somebody else, otherwise you're not in compliance with what's required of you. And I'll, I'll give you a little history here. I've done public records requests with the city of Arcata. One of the first batches I had, I came in there and they said, well, it's going to be $260 for your first public records request. They were burying me in dyes. I said, fine, here's your $260. That culminated eventually in the truth coming out. And, and the public records request is how we discover things that need to be discovered. And it cost the city of Arcata $6 million in clawback money from redevelopment by the time it was done. I tried to do things in working, like, again, with the county, they said, we will not give you this public records request. I was asking for, there's 14, uh, 16, eight, it was $18 million owed on Measure S tax by the farmers. They would not give me the list of that, those people and what was owed. Their legal staff said, this is proprietary, we're not going to give it to you. Instead of suing them, and I was also talking to Ryan Birds with Local, and I don't know if you know, but most of these municipalities have been sued for not being, following the PRAs, and they win every single time. I said, Ryan, I'll try and take care of this one. So, I worked it out with, with the council there, the assistant council in the council's office, and we came to an agreement, yes, I would receive that. We received that. So, this is why I'm coming to you, trying to avoid this kind of thing happening. And I'll give you plenty of time to read through this, but you definitely have to have someone who's willing to follow the process. I also have a public records request here. If you go a little further into the package, you go like one, two, three pages down, where I have
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following you because you're talking
So, I'll slow down a little bit.
And there's a lot of stuff to read, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to
I understand. So, I'm giving you an overview today because I was unfortunately not able to get you the packet.
What page am I looking at?
So, now we're looking on page three.
Page three?
Mm-hmm.
I see a two and then a seven.
It says one of seven.
It says, it says two, two of seven, but it's page three in your packet. Starts with subject FW Shoal Building Emporium. Is that, you see that one on there? Your third page.
Page two of seven?
Down in the left-hand quarter, it says something of seven. Mine's not clear.
One of seven is page three here.
You'll, you'll have, have six numbers listed. There's six bullet points or six numbers listed on the left-hand side. Are you on that page?
It says re Shoal Building Emporium inspection, May 24.
Correct. And down below there, it starts, good morning, Gary. This is a formal PRA request.
Oh, here we go. That's big.
You got that one? Okay, thank you. Sorry to move so fast here. And there, there are six different public records requests. And, and I have had those out for over a month with no response saying, we will get to you, this is the timeframe, this is how you do it. That's what's required to do. Of course, as soon as you have somebody who's not willing to follow the process through email, I suggested maybe you want to do snail mail with me or some other way, but this is required. I don't want you folks to end up in trouble for not following the correct procedures for public records requests. Public records requests are how, like I said, how, how the public has the ability to find out what's going on. So, again, this, this is going to be something that you can't do right now, but I'm getting it started. I'll re-agendize it at another meeting and have a more complete packet for you, and I apologize for not having all those before. So, now we're going to the next page here, and it says, this is an example of a public records request. It says North Coast Journal, N C J. Do you see that page? Real large letters. So, this is one of my public records requests, and this, I'm going to give you an example of why we need to know how things are handled. In this particular one, this is proof of publication, and this public records request was to show that you did have the ability to notify public hearings, public meetings, and important things with a paper of general circulation. Okay? That's required. That's something that's required of you. And it, the, the city for a long time, before Mandy actually, came up and said, we don't have to do that. So, this is why these are important to have, these things. Now that we have that established, this may unwind a whole bunch of your decisions that have been made in Blue Lake. I'm talking about five years going back and having public hearings over again because the process wasn't handled. This is why we do public records requests, so we can show, so we can bring things forward to you, and we can fix them at minimal cost. I'm not here to cost the city money. This is my money also. This is everybody's money here, and I want to get our most bank for a buck. On the other hand, if we're not following what's required for public records requests, you're leaving yourself open, open to problems, and that's normally done through litigation, like I said. And that's the last thing I ever want to do. You'll also notice in here, the reason she's not talking to me or not emailing me is because of my threats of litigation. Well, if, if there were legitimate threats of litigation or you had a perception of litigation, you would have been having closed sessions. So, that's not justified. In other words, closed session items would be proof that you felt I was going to litigate. I think I make it quite clear. I'm going to give you some time to read that all. But this, I want to get the process started and we can start thinking about it. And I'm not sure you're going to be anywhere near coming to any kind of decision, other than I'm going to ask your staff, ask you to have a meeting with your attorney, possibly in the next meeting, and schedule down and have him explain to you your obligations and make sure you have the policies, procedures, and protocols to do what you're required to do by law. And that's all I'm asking for, for that to be set for a future agenda item. Read what's here. If you have questions, I think you all have my phone numbers, 707-668-5288, 707-496-7454. And I'm in the phone book, happy to speak with any of you at any time. I know we have to avoid Brown Act problems, but I'm, I'm happy to give you any further information you want, and it will be in the next, next packet because obviously, we're going to have to have a few, few further discussion. And again, I highly recommend you consult your council, who's not available. He's on vacation this week, and I forwarded this to him also and a few other things. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And again, my main, main objective here is enable the city to do what it's required to do legally and to not jeopardize your, your financial funding because of exposing yourself to potential litigation.
So, this is not an action item. Is there any discussion from council before I open it to public?
I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we have a binder or, or an E-file somewhere that, that compiles our policies and protocol and procedures where anybody can come in and have a look at that or?
Yes, we do.
We do. And you guys actually received a training not too long ago on the, the CPRA, and staff also has a manual with a policy because it's not, it's not a city policy. This is a state law and a state mandate, and there's mandates on how we respond. There's also state definitions on what actually constitutes a public records request. Not all requests meet the definition under the CPRA. So, that's also something that the staff, we have to make that determination. Sometimes we make that because it's an obvious, it's an obvious answer, and sometimes we refer it to our city attorney to give us guidance on whether it actually meets a CPRA guidelines or thresholds, and so we receive guidance from our attorney as well.
Is there a timeline on when these questions are asked or the requests are asked?
There is. Yeah, so it's usually 10 days, depending on the type or the volume of information that we may have to gather. We can ask for additional time. A lot of time, these requests are fairly easy to find. Some of these, I don't know, I'm not sure what Mr. Sawatsky provided to you, but I can tell you that Mr. Sawatsky turns in a lot of PRAs to us. We're probably, I don't even know how deep we are to, that we have to wade through. A lot of them don't meet the threshold of the Public Records Act as far as what is a public record. A lot of times, they're generalized questions or requests for information that's not a document or something that's readily available, so those don't meet the threshold of that. But it does take us, you know, with a small staff, too. It's a lot of work. So, the more PRAs we get, we've received a lot lately, which is totally fine. That's the public's right to do so, but it does put a burden on staff to try and get these documents within, you know, a short turnaround time. But that is the intent of, of the California Public Records Act. But that is the intent of the California Public Records Act. So I believe what Mr. Swatsky is referring to in my response about not responding via email anymore was actually recommended by the city attorney because there was the implication of litigation. So at that point, our attorney recommended that we discontinue that form of communication and it become more formal.
And so what's the alternative?
Mr. Swatsky can make a formal P R A. He knows how to do that, he does that on a daily basis almost. And we are wading through those P R As and getting the information as timely and as responsibly as we can. Sometimes we have to send them, he does P R As to the city planner. So those, sometimes we have to send them out to different staff members. It might be to the city engineer, the city planner, to the attorney. So those get funneled out to departments to be able to provide the information.
And my question is that we have a planner on Wednesday mornings and our city engineer. Has Mr. Swatsky availed himself of meeting with them on their Wednesday morning duty days to discuss these items because it sounds like some of it is in a question form? It doesn't sound like a lot of it's documentation. It sounds like you need to have a discussion with our city engineer and city planner if you have questions.
I would like to respond to that, yes, I have. And there's definitely a difference between when I do a P R A and when I have a question for the planner. And Gary Reese has been great in responding to those things. The main thing is, is that if your city clerk, who's the one who's supposed to be responding on this, does say something is not subject to the public records request, or they say we need more time for that. And I know, I enjoy working with Honley there. You know, I think I only have, I only have, what, we have those six items that are over a month. And then we have one other item which I put on there today, which was for your audit that was due a while ago. I wish you'd see that one. So I try and I always do the same as I do other people. I say, is there sideboards on here? How can I minimize your time? How can I do it so it doesn't cost the city money? Because that's not my objective, my objective is to get information. Now, you will find, if you did have instruction, I believe your attorney, if he instructed you correctly, but a response is in order. And somebody needs to respond to me, we will respond to you within ten days. Or this is not subject to public records request, or we have no documents that are subject to your request to provide to you. And that's the lack of communication that apparently you will find is in violation. So thank you, opportunity to make that comment.
In a formal public records request, is that like, you fill it out a certain way? Is that what you mean by formal?
You can come in different forms. You could do an email request. The C P R A does not mandate a specific form necessarily because it's not, the act isn't there to limit people's ability to make a request. So you could come in, you can hand in something, you can send an email, you can but fill out a form. You could come in and talk to staff and we could capture that request in writing. But like I said, it's not every request meets the definition of a record. And so there's, you know, there's a large volume of questions and things and I don't know, like, I don't know what you have, but I know what we receive on, you know, a very regular basis to wade through.
Oh, there's, oh, oh.
Yep. There's, that's all, there's a couple of things there. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Well, this is not an action item. I, you know, we can look over this information and.
That's all I ask.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I recommend that you meet with our city engineer and our city planner, which you said you already have.
Correct.
Maybe another meeting is in order.
They've been really answering the questions other than, other than those six ones. And there is a tendency, I've had, to go ahead and forward these directly at the request of your city clerk, city manager, to your council and to your staff members, which I've been doing, and to make sure that they do get those and so they understand. And of course, they can respond to her saying, we have nothing, nothing to answer this to or does not qualify for a public records request. And that's all we're really asking is whether, is the correct procedures be followed regarding notification of these. I did want to thank, thank Mandy for one of my public records requests. She put three documents on your website the other day that, in my opinion, should have been there for a long time. They were a month or two old. She put them up there and I strongly appreciate. So how do you minimize your public records request? Well, you put relevant documents on your website in a timely manner. It's relevant that the public has. Then we don't have to make your request there. That's all we're asking for, accurate information on your website to start. Thank you, opportunity to make anything else.
I have nothing else, do you? I see a hand is raised.
And a heart.
And a heart. So she loves us and she's asking us questions.
Michael Wayne, if you're going to take public comment now, I'd love it because I can actually hear you guys for a second to know you're talking to me. I would love to hear exactly what Kent just said. As I know that you're doing the website, I know it's progressing and evolving, but obviously, any information like, it's going to be published by the time, it's going to reduce staff time. And staff time is valuable. We know staff time is, is, is at a moment of transition. And Mandy, we all love you and I hope you're feeling very well. And everybody in this room also feels that way for you. I just want to put that out there. And we understand, we're all human, just like Earl said in his last meeting, we're all human. And we understand that, but we also, to just move forward in a timely manner, when projects are moving forward in a timely manner. The only time called, records requests are initiated towards our cities in that time of deficit where we pulled information and it's been, and I know that perhaps maybe Kent is being, you know, and I'm going to go jump back to the last, the last item, you know, anybody that's been to the event, I'm going to run it up to you. Sorry, you're missed, Jen. And yes, we should talk about it. It's okay, it's okay, we have a short, Jen, tonight's beautiful. We should bring this stuff out and as community, try and have as much dialogue as possible because it's very limited. And if we reflect back to what's going on in Arcata and Eureka and County, we are so lucky, you guys, we are. I think we have a lot of base and foundation to move forward with everything we need to do it. But one thing we need to really check ourselves with is, you know, just get it out there to the public. Don't, and it's okay if other people have opinions with it and share it this way or that way. That's fine, but the core stuff, that you know is legitimate and that you know as far as your folks go, you know this public. I mean, quickly, let's just try to get it out there. We're in a technology era, we have that availability, let's get it done. And let's get back to getting this community working together instead of wanting to worry about what's going on because we feel like we just don't know, okay? That's where really where a lot of people are coming from is they're just feeling uncomfortable because a lot of stuff needs forward and they just feel uneducated and they're trying their best. So I do believe we need to reduce staff time and we do need to reduce these public request stuff, but at the same time, put the information out there, we can do that. Thank you very much. You guys have a long night.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comment? Okay, since this isn't an action item, we're going to move on. Council correspondence, is there any correspondence? We're now on consent agenda. Three items on the consent agenda, is anyone that would like to pull an item? I would like to pull the May meeting minutes because I have a couple of additions I'd like to put. Any others? So we can approve June, or B and C, and then we can talk about A, or we can talk about A right now.
Just talk about A and then approve them all at the same time?
Yeah, that would be good too. The reason I pulled the May 23rd is I believe that was the night that after the flag salute, we had a moment of silence for Earl Eddy.
I think it was June.
It was June.
Yeah.
Because I was there for that one.
Yeah, yeah, we could have had it before then. Okay, then the other thing I need about the May minutes is on page four, where at the bottom it says, Councilmember Scifani, I would like to pledge half of my stipend check to Justin. I attended the meeting. And I would like it noted that Mayor Adeline Jones has been turning over her $50 a month stipend to the city for very many months. Like that in the record.
You said it.
It's true.
I have a, something in here.
Is it on May or June?
It's on May.
Okay, so I guess we're pulling June too because I would like it noted that after the pledge of allegiance at the June meeting, we did have a moment of silence for city planning commissioner Earl Eddy.
Okay, what was yours?
I have number seven, and I control that date.
On which one is it?
It's the June meeting.
Okay. And what page is it? Animal Control, got it.
At the bottom of that paragraph, it says, I was glad the video recording was available in case the clerk takes terrible meeting minutes. I think I said, because my memory is terrible and in case the minutes don't totally reflect. I could go back and check, but anyway.
Is that the top of that page?
Yes. It's the bottom of the first paragraph.
Oh, oh. Glad that a video recording is available in case the clerk takes terrible meeting minutes. I guess that's not what you said.
Well, I hope I didn't say that the clerk takes terrible meeting minutes. I meant to say that in case the minutes don't reflect everything that happens and my memory is terrible. So I like going back to the videos to refresh my memory.
Well, we can go back and check the video on that. Our old clerk used to have a very simple little tape recorder that she'd take and she'd go back and forth. Any other items on the minutes?
Yeah, there's another one here.
Okay, what page are you on now?
There's something else I said, same page. We don't need the public safety commission, I absolutely didn't say that. I might have said, we don't need their recommendation before we start to work in a parallel direction, but I didn't say we don't need the public safety commission.
So you're saying, you said, we don't need the public safety commission's input or something like that, or?
No, I said, we didn't need their recommendation before we, before we, in order to be moving forward with something that I felt was in a parallel to where they would, they would be recommending. And I'm sure I didn't say it exactly that way, but I'm also sure I didn't say we don't need the public safety commission.
Safety commission's recommendation. Any other?
Do you want to just add recommendation at the end of that?
Well, that's what I did, I just put apostrophe S recommendation. Because I thought that would just.
Recommendation, I would say, in order to move forward.
Okay. It's really tricky in minutes when you quote people and what they say. And I know in the past, city clerks have not done that, actually. They, that, I mean, the really most important thing about minutes are the motions, the seconds, and the votes. But, you know, this level of detail is nice, but some city clerks don't do it.
And then on the bottom of that page, sorry.
Yeah.
It says, I attend the public safety commission meeting. That should say, I attended the planning commission meeting.
Any other changes, corrections, additions? So we need a motion to pass the consent agenda with those corrections and additions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Christopher Edgar, to pass the consent agenda with the corrections and additions noted. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Reports of council and staff. I see you have city manager report, but I think we'll do our council reports first, if that's okay with you. So typically, we go around the dais here to see what, not that one. To see what meetings you've attended and anything else you would like to report as a council person. So we'll start with you, Christopher Edgar.
Nothing to report. Nobody has come to me and wanted to meet yet. Because I'm on the fire department.
Yeah.
And I'm on the Blue Lake. And I talked to them and there's nothing to report. I just go over there and talk to those guys and see if they need anything from us, if they have anything that they need to convey to the, our city council. And usually it's no, it's nothing. And then.
So do they have regular meetings, the fire hall?
Yeah. It's every first and third, first and third Tuesday, right, Mandy?
So are you attending those meetings?
Well, there's the district meeting and then there's the regular volunteer meeting.
Yeah, this is the volunteer meeting and.
But you attend, don't you?
No, not, not completely attend. But they, they have a, we, a P R that I'm supposed to talk to, and they don't have anything to report. And then the Blue Lake Rancheria, that's ad as needed.
Right, they don't need regular, I don't understand.
Yeah.
Okay, moving around, Elise?
I just have to report that, working with Andy, the web designer, we did clone, he cloned the website on the 13th, I believe it was. And so he's working on that. I don't have an update as to when he thinks he'll be done. Originally, the estimate was somewhere in the two-week mark. We're coming up on that here real quick. So I know he's working on it and hopefully we'll have a revamped website. For sure, we'll have it by the next meeting. Hopefully, a bit sooner than that. And that's all I have, I don't have any, any meetings to report on.
Okay. So I attended the Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting on the 13th. However, we did not have a quorum. And so those of us that were there, I think there were only three of us, just went home. Now, normally, they don't have an August meeting at the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, but it looks like they will have to have one because of the lack of quorum for that July meeting. On July 20th, I attended a Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting and Julie was actually zooming in on that meeting. We had a transit performance audit done by Genevieve Evans. We had a presentation concerning the Broadway pop-up demonstration that they have going on in Eureka. We did not get to see creating the Grove video. And then we went on to approve a letter to the Humboldt Bay Offshore Wind Heavy Lift Multipurpose Marine Terminal Project. We made a few changes on that, but we did pass it. And that's all I have to report on that. And the last thing I want to report on is we had a very successful Annie and Mary Day. I had a record 54 booths on that day, which brought in over $2,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. All of the vendors were really happy, they all made money, and they were just so happy with our town. Good music, no reports of any problems that I could, that were reported to me or in any other way. Good music and brave was on time and did well, so it was a very successful Annie and Mary Day.
I'm not a drinker, but the drink line was really long. Is there any way to have more than one? There was one booth?
Then there was another drinking thing over right out here.
Right.
Yeah, but she went all the way across the field.
Well, I purposely.
So I felt bad for the people who drank because I'm like, dang, that's a long time to wait.
Honestly, it was very fast.
Oh, good, okay.
And that line was only like that. And that line was only like that for like ten minutes.
Oh, okay, maybe that's just when I.
Because then like the rest of the day, because I was there all day long, and there's only a few times where the line actually like started stretching out.
Okay. So I purposely can figure, when I put the booths around and we had to make it a really big wide horseshoe, I always put the Annie and Mary rail trail booths for the beer at the very end so that that open space in the middle can be used for lining. So there is actually some thinking going on and planning. It's not just a haphazard thing. And so there was one thing, oh, then the Dan Burden walk, which was today, short-term memory here. Last night I went to the Warfinger Building and saw his PowerPoint there, and then today he joined about thirty of us at City Hall, and we walked up to the school, made various stops, came back down, walked all the way over to the museum, various stops along the way. He had lots of creative ideas of what can happen with our town. And then we went to the town square and the post office area, and then came back to City Hall, so, um, and then an hour and a half later, I don't know how he did this, he pulled all his ideas together and had a discussion here at two thirty in this building, a PowerPoint on some of his recommendations for the city to improve their traffic calming and safety. So it was, it was very good, and we're really lucky to have him, he's quite a renowned person in that area.
I was gonna talk about that. Because I was there too, but.
Okay.
Stole my thunder, sorry. No, he was amazing. He was amazingly positive, and he had lots of good things to say about Blue Lake and what we're already doing. He was really impressed with what we're doing with our walkability and our trail. And we are the end of the Great Redwood Trail. This is, this is it, or the origin, if you want to look at it that way. Yeah, either way, it's a, it's a three hundred mile trail that is proposed, and it's huge. And we are, we're either where you begin or you end this trail, so, um, Blue Lake is going to be, well, it could start right here.
Okay, where's the other end?
San Francisco. It starts at San Francisco.
It starts at the logger bar.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I did not have any meetings, they were all canceled due to lack of quorums, so, yeah, I was gonna mention him, but he was great, yeah, that was great. I think, is he still around? Is he gonna be anywhere else if anybody wants to go?
He's in McKinleyville tonight, I think even as we speak, yeah.
Amazing, really positive.
Around all of us.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that leaves us with the manager's report.
Yeah, so this time I provided you, this is kind of the periodic table that I provide to council, just more of an update on projects. This is the ongoing project list. This doesn't include all of our projects, but these are the ones that are probably most of interest as they're moving forward. So we have a monthly meeting between the city planner and the city engineer and I to track our progress, look at how projects are moving forward, kind of give ourselves some regular updates and check-ins, looking at grant opportunities and just project progression. So I always think this is a kind of an interesting report for council and the public to have, because I think for a small city, we have a lot of projects going on, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Juggling.
Lot of juggling, and, but also I think just a lot of interest through funding agencies and even other communities to see how Blue Lake is moving projects forward, looking at recreation economies. I think we're, we're definitely, you know, finding our place at the table, and I think Dan's walk today was a perfect example of, you know, how a small community like this can also have applicability to other communities. Some of the things that we're doing here are replicable for other communities and vice versa, so, um, yeah, there's a lot, a lot going on and a lot to track, and, like I said, these aren't all the projects. I do redact some of them that are more of a personal nature between individual residents that I don't feel necessarily needs to be in a report like this, but obviously is always public information. And then I didn't do a formal report this time, was a little bit laid up for a couple of weeks, and managed to stay up to date on work, but wasn't able to completely pull together a whole report. So if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if the feasibility study from Storyland is done.
So we are at the end of that application, and the development package, we're calling it kind of like our investor book right now, is almost complete. We did talk to our funding agency, we have about sixty thousand dollars left in that grant, and we just asked for a project extension, which they are going to grant to us, and we've asked for the extension to actually do the survey of the Powers Creek District properties, to look at proper configurations for lot line adjustments and a minor subdivision. And then we've also asked for the remaining funds to be used to look at a master plan for the remaining properties on the north side of Taylor Way as well, to help us look at development potential. So part of the project that we're looking at also are improvements to Taylor Way, and we actually just had a conversation with, with Dan Burden and his crew about contracting with them to possibly do that master plan for us and give us some recommendations on ways to make Taylor Way a safer, more accessible road for all the service. And HCOG actually has a little pot of money that they're going to allow us to request to be able to pay for that, so there's, yeah, so we'll wrap that up with a really comprehensive approach to Powers Creek District, looking at development opportunities. We have the reform of the feasibility study for the RV parking campground, we have the elevations, the site layouts, some additional rendering. So at the end of the project, we should have a really nice, usable, fairly close to a master plan for the Powers Creek District to help guide the council's lot process for future development investment.
So when you say master plan, is that physical master plan or other ways?
So it would be looking at opportunity, the kind of the best configuration and use of the remaining properties, looking at ingress address, looking at utility and infrastructure improvements, and looking at connectivity between the uses. So looking at if you had an RV parking campground on one side, you have the mixed-use development on the other side, a bike park, and maybe some other, you know, manufacturing or other development, like what's the best layout for those types of developments? And what are the best intersections of uses, whether that's green space, shared parking, roadways, trails, and other connectivity opportunities?
Yeah, Dan looked at our, our architectural drawing of the Botowat Community, and he suggested a little different parking issue, because he's really a proponent of, not parallel parking, but backing in parking.
Yeah, yeah, that was really interesting to see that. I haven't, I haven't, it's not something that we had thought about, but it's definitely now on our radars and I'm sure.
Yeah, and then Cash later joined us, so I don't know if they got to discuss that anymore fully. And then the question I had about was about the corp yard, MU.
Uh, that's the, is that the mixed use?
Oh, mixed use development.
Last page?
Yeah, on the last page.
Number forty-nine?
You said next step, city contract. City contract for historical report and the potential new applicant about process fees, et cetera.
Yeah, so we conducted a historical report on this in Storyland, because the building is over fifty years old. So in order to look at any type of development, we needed to determine whether that building had any historical value. So we were able to take that out of the EDA grant, so Bill Rich completed that assessment, and he determined that the building has been modified so many times and has so many additions and different architectural styles coming to intersect that it didn't have a real historical value. So historical value is probably what we're looking for, but historical nature, they're not necessarily historical. You know, you might have some redwood over here, some fir over here, and then there's just some real anomaly type materials that have been placed in there that were probably just picked through to be able to like put things together, so.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I have, I was wondering about the town square, and I know we've talked a lot, a lot about the town square, but I don't remember seeing like a cohesive drawing of the town square.
Yes, yeah, so we have, we're actually out to bid for the town square.
Yeah, I see that.
And it's, we actually have a pre-bid walkthrough tomorrow, so we've, we basically have stayed with the original design that we, that we had had funded, basically, and we're kind of backing into that project right now, because we know that some of the elements are going to be very expensive, and some of the elements might lend themselves to maybe like a fundraiser or a donation or a volunteer project, but we're trying to, right now, the bid is for a comprehensive project that includes all the elements that were identified in the grant application that was funded. And so that was a project that went through that very extensive community process where we had, I mean, I don't even know how many.
All the posters.
Tens of meetings that we had, and with the kids and different user groups, identified the features, and we applied for it, and that was what was funded. So it's pretty much stayed within the confines of that, because those are the elements that we have to have in the project, some level of, including the splash pad, art installations, the bathroom, the landscaping.
A privacy wall of some sort.
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of an integration of art and landscaping, so what we had proposed was kind of a trellis structure that could have like some vines or some kind of, to kind of buffer from the neighboring properties. And so we'll see when the bids come in, we'll look at those bids and then see where we need to negotiate either elements out or look at moving them to a different project or putting them on hold or seeking additional funding.
And if the, the property ever changes, which it seems like it probably could in the future, to become something different, would there be a way for them to interact if that's what we wanted, or would it be a real sturdy?
The, the town square itself?
Yes.
You're talking about the.
The property adjacent?
Adjacent.
Yes.
Adjacent?
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually, we've actually designed the town square with that thought in mind.
Okay.
That if that, if that property wasn't, that property as it sits now, but it had some other type of development potential.
Like artist studios or something like that.
What are the best ways to make those connections? So we've reserved areas with the thought of, you know, a food truck location or pathways, and we've also reserved space for the, because we know eventually we're gonna have to look at the creek in that area, because we have those retaining walls that are starting to fail. So the site is actually designed to have a setback that's wide enough to accommodate if we needed to bench, take those retaining walls out and bench it down, much like they have on the other side of the post office. So we've done some preliminary engineering to look at all those options, but making sure that we're not, you know, pigeonholing ourselves into a design that's not flexible. So we have utility lines running that can accommodate things like a food truck, we have installations for the Christmas tree, we have installations for music, different lighting opportunities, as well as like the kids' water fountain and some other items.
And the creek restoration there, you're looking at something that looks more like on the other side of the creek, or the rock bed rather than?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Metal, I mean, concrete?
Yeah, looking at the post office side, it doesn't seem like there's any reason why it couldn't be carried forward to the, you know, the downstream side on the city's property. Now with Delarte being the property owner on the other side, there's a lot of opportunities for us to work together. So it would be a nice addition, you know, to be able to kind of, you know, bench that down so that there is more of an integration and a connection to the creek as well. But that would be a whole different application in the future, but we are starting to really pick up some interest in restoring Powers Creek. We just actually had some money added to our grant to restore Powers Creek on the city section, so that went from six hundred plus thousand to up over nine hundred thousand dollars to do that work, so.
Nice.
There's definitely a lot of interest in Powers Creek and what we can do to improve the habitat and the functionality.
Do you have, have you received back the financial audit for twenty-one, twenty-two?
We are starting, so they're in the process of conducting that audit right now.
Wasn't that due to go to the state at the end of June?
No, we, we're in compliance with our audits, so they're in the process. They should be sending, I think they should be sending the reports over to the court to review here soon.
Any other questions here, staff? Any from the public? Not really. Recognize. Wait a minute.
So I also did, which I do frequently, I did, did point out there, the same as working with, around with Dan, Eureka did a wonderful thing regarding trying and putting cones out and things where they were going to have their alterations to the roadway for ball bouts and things, to see if they were functional, and like that was something Dan also supported doing, so we can tell before you build something whether it's going to be effective or not. I did really appreciate the walk around that was taken. It was something that I heard about five minutes before twelve, and, and so fortunately I was able to make it over there for that. And I know that when I asked Mr. Fogut if he had, or asked in general if the truck drivers had been notified, he said, said no, he said Green Diamond had been notified, but when I asked specifically Rother Kernan and, and the other ones had, he said no because, because he was on vacation, and because, because Mandy was ill, and he was lucky to put the whole thing together, which I appreciate, but this is, this is something that hopefully the city and, and an engineering firm of his size can have somebody, you know, who has the ability to make a couple of phone calls in their absence, they can delegate that to someone else, so we can have the reach out. Now, one thing I did strongly support, and I asked him about, he said, important thing on trails to make people feel comfortable is that you have residences there where people are watching it, and that's an important thing, and I strongly supported that. And then we went on, and he said, how wonderful, and I can't quote him exactly, but I said, I guess you're a strong proponent of neighborhood watch, he said, there's nothing better, I recall, than having sixty people get together and a picnic or something, and then, then going from there, as far as forming a community. And so I strongly support that, so that's something maybe we should agendize, you know, in the future to make sure we can do the best we can to follow through with what I think his was saying as far as trail maintenance and things like. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on those particular meetings. Let's see, there was one other, no, I think I, I think I attended, had my share of meetings there. Thank you for having me speak.
Thank you. Julie?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience this evening. I'm glad we have a short agenda and allowing us to comment on our reports. Adeline, I would like to just also have the same request, I had HCOG in my community comment, Steve Madrone was very nice to jump back in, because he knows, I've asked him as well, to keep me informed. And there's a lot of support for the trail, and I know that there is a need for connectivity, but at the same time, an update would be great, there's very funding, you're on phase two, and having those reports that, you know, are coming in, the HCOG coming back to Blue Lake, if you're in support of them, being brought back to the council. As well as reports by manager, I appreciate having some updates with some other projects that have been brewing and already in productivity. Anytime that we can allocate more time to our manager reports, I think is really beneficial. There's a lot to cover there, I know it's time consuming, but at the same time, it's great to just kind of keep everybody updated, and if there's a way to just add some of that information in a packet, so that. so that, um, prior to meetings, um, I mean, some having to go through all the dialogue of it. Um, we could just have something in the packet that kind of is explicit and agendized towards the projects in town that are happening, so that they can be reviewed. And then afterwards, as of now, you're presenting us an opportunity to speak. Um, we, we would like to talk on any of those items if you'd be given the option. And just minimize a little bit of time, but also give everybody that's paying attention time to review everything going on, and then chime in if necessary. So thank you again. I appreciate everybody speaking in there. I am Julie.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any announcements? I just want to announce, since this is happening before our next council meeting, that the citywide yard sale is set for Saturday, August 19th. You sign up to be on the map at the Abundant Upcycle Boutique. It costs $5 to do that. Exact change is appreciated. And we do know that's the same day as the Buddy Brown Blues Festival. So people can either listen to music or go yard sailing.
Or both.
And both, yeah. Okay. There will be, and that's good. The more the merrier, I always say. All right, uh, moving on to item 11, future agenda items. I do want a proclamation about Earl Eddie. I know it's going to take a little, um, scouting around. I think he was on CERT. I talked with Lynn Glenn, and he was on CERT for eight years. So, um, you can add that to the proclamation. Any other future agenda items from council persons? We all know the deadline on that. Okay. Moving right along to item 12.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Scifani to adjourn. Any further discussion from council, from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned.